Good evening, Byram Hills. Welcome to the April 2021 meeting of the Byram Hills Board of Education, which will include Budget Hearing Four. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are now in the midst of April. Spring is officially sprung. Glad to see all of you. The board met starting at 7:00 PM to go into executive session where we discussed the personnel matter, a superintendent's matter, and a Board of Education internal matter. At this point, I ask Dr. Coltenek, are there any comments from the public?
No, there are no questions from the public or comments.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye. I note for the community tonight, there is no consent agenda. So that said, we will move to a special report, which is Budget Hearing Four, where we review the administration's proposed 2021-2020 budget. And let me turn it over to our esteemed superintendent.
Okay, and Kelly, I assume you are pulling up the, okay, great. So tonight, we have Budget Hearing Four. You will hear Kelly talk tonight specifically about tax rates, about tax levy increase, and the balanced budget that supports the programs that we have here in Byram Hills. As we know, Board Hearings Two and Three are opportunities for us to make adjustments to the budget, to hear any recommendations from the public and from the board. The budget does remain as proposed for board's consideration for April 20th, our permissible tax levy being at 2.57%. And while it is not typical for school districts to come in below a tax levy, we are proposing a permissible levy with a percentage of 1% this year as opposed to the 2.57 permissible. And I am confident that this proposed budget will continue to support our programs and facilities for every child in Byram Hills. We can get started with Mia talking about where we are. Mia is on the Finance Advisory Committee, as is Mike Sanders and Scott Levy, and they help to develop this budget for the board to review and potentially adopt. So go ahead, Mia.
Thanks, Jen. As Jen mentioned, it's April 13th, and we are in Budget Hearing Four. April 20th is the budget adoption. May 4th, Budget Hearing Five, which is the review of the proposed budget. And May 18th is the vote at Crittenin, 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM.
Kelly will also talk a little bit about absentee ballots as well. So our 2020-21 budget was at $94,534,535. We are looking at a proposed budget-to-budget increase of $709,009 or a 0.75% budget-to-budget increase with the new 2021-22 proposed budget at $95,243,544.
And then the components of the budget include program capital administrative, as I've gone over before. Program being the majority of the budgets, everything associated with instruction in the classroom, everything that affects our students, our teachers, our bus drivers, our aides, or psychologists are in the program. And that's 72% of the total budget. The next category being capital, which is really the operation and maintenance over our facilities, our debt service, you know, legal fees, auditing is a capital expense. And then finally administrative is everything supervision related. And that's 11.7%. And in terms of spending on expenditure side, the largest portion being salary benefits are employees, almost 78%, followed by contractual services at 14%, debt service, supplies, equipment, and maintenance projects and vehicles. Again, a total increase of 0.75%. So there has been a change in our maximum allowable tax levy formula since we talked about it in January in that last couple of meetings. The final state budget came out, and we are seeing additional money in terms of building aid. When they ran the runs in January, they didn't include the turf project in our aid calculations, which was a little disturbing to me because I hustled to get the final cost reports done. And we didn't have aid for it, but when they ran this run for the final budget, our aid associated with the turf project was included. So it's additional aid, and you know, I won't go into the formula, but it's an exemption, so it reduces our total max levy. So when we first talked about it, we were at 2.6% maximum levy. But with the additional aid, building aid, it drops us down to 2.57. So that's the difference in terms of our maximum allowable tax levy. So that's where we are now. Maximum allowable tax levy of 2.57, about $2.1 million that we could increase. In terms of revenues, again, the majority of our revenue comes from our local taxes, the taxpayer. We only receive 4% state aid. And so 89% of our revenue comes from our real property taxes, 3% from our pilot agreements. Fund balance, 3%, and again, other revenues is 1%. And that's essentially just our interest earnings and our county sales tax revenue that we receive from Westchester. So here's the actual revenues. It's changed since last time we spoke. The government, the final budget came out, and you know, the state received a large stimulus package from the federal government, $12 billion. And that actually, they used that $12 billion. About $3 billion went to state aid, additional state aid. So most of that was foundation aid. You know, you probably heard a nauseam about foundation aid, how it's underfunded. They've actually increased foundation aid statewide by $1.4 billion. So you know, districts throughout New York State are getting increases in foundation aid. The minimum any school district could receive as an increase is 2%, and that's what we received this year. So it's about, it's about $40,000 in terms of an increase in foundation aid. So that's what you'll see under the stated portion here. If you look back to the last presentation, it was about $40,000 difference there. About $60,000, excuse me, about $60,000 difference, $40,000 being the foundation aid and the additional 20 for being the building aid, the shop building aid. So really, we just, we increased the state aid number here, and then we just decreased how much fund balance we needed to add in to balance the budget for next year. So it was just kind of a shift. There's no change in the total number. Again, it's still $709,009. The shift between additional state aid we received and additional fund balance, excuse me, reduction in fund balance needed to balance the budget for next year.
And Kelly, is there any more information on the federal money that might be allocated to district, or is it still not clear?
Yeah, I mean, we know our allocation is about $425,000. And we know 20% of that $425,000 must be used for professional development or things to that nature. The other 80% is still kind of up in the air. They have some categories you can use. I know technology and catch up on students in terms of delayed learning is associated with that. But just the kind of details haven't been distributed yet. Again, this is something that's going to New York State. New York State is going to kind of have their way with deciding how they're going to distribute it. So it may take some time for some real thorough guidance. You know, we kind of just got a brief kind of reader's digest, a paragraph on what it can be used for. But I anticipate in the next month or so, we should get further information. So I don't know if it's something that, you know, there's been a lot of talk it can be used over a four-year period. It can be used in different situations. So I should have something, not by the next meeting, but the May meeting where I should have more guidance of what we can do with those funds.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, keep us posted.
I do know we're getting $425,000, so that's obviously encouraging.
That's good.
And then the tax rates for next year. North Castle, which is 85% of our properties, it's a 1.4% increase. Newcastle and Bedford, Newcastle 3.5, Bedford being 5.9, and Mount Pleasant finally at 5.8. Again, if you want to take a look at the last presentation, you can find a little more information about assessed values and the changes in those assessed values, which affect the tax rate and how it's calculated based on the tax rate. So there have been changes. You'll see a history of tax rate throughout the last five or six years, how it's went up and down in certain towns. Again, this assessed values is something that's produced by the local town assessors. The district has no control over that, unfortunately, and we just, we can propose the tax levy at what we feel is responsible, which this year is 1%. And then based on the formula, we calculate the tax rate. So that's what they are for next year. And then finally, again, a tax levy increase of 1%, about $1.3 million below that maximum 2.57% this year. And a budget budget increase of 0.75, total budget of $95,243,544. This is the last budget hearing, well, not last proposed budget hearing, will be next week. The 20th, we'll be adopting the budget. And then following that, we'll review the proposed budget on the final budget hearing. And then the budget vote on May 18th will take place in person. We'll have all the safety protocols associated with COVID at HCC. You will have the option to request an absentee ballot, a little different from last year where it was, we mailed out. We were required to mail it out to every home within the district. This year, if you don't feel comfortable coming to the location, the newsletter will have information of how you can obtain absentee ballot. Very simple. It'll be on the website. You'll just click the section, fill it out. There's a box that says, you know, you can get absentee ballot for, based on the governor's executive order for fear of COVID or contracting COVID. And it'll be the same process as you had last year. You'll fill out that form, send it in, we'll mail in a ballot to you, and then you'll send it back. You can either mail it back, or you can drop it in the office.
Kelly, is there a deadline for making that request?
Yes, I can't remember offhand. It's about six, six or seven days before the budget vote. But again, that'll be on the budget newsletter, and I'll talk about it next week and the week after. I'll remind everybody for that information. I'm sure we'll send a blast out so people are aware that that's available. But yeah.
We will also be hosting a Budget Information Committee meeting for anybody who's interested. We'll do that virtually. And then Kelly and I, starting this Thursday, will be doing principals' coffees regarding the budget. So we'll have that answer actually for Thursday by the time we start to meet with the parents.
Yep, and if this is what, we'll have that information as well. If you go under the Board of Ed tab under Budget, it talks about the absentee ballot, tells you that information. And then all the presentations will be there. And if you have any questions, feel free to email me at the email on the screen, and I'll be happy to answer any budget-related questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And I remind the community that all the community looks for here is to send informed voters to the polls. We are trying to make this, like this year and all the years prior, a very transparent process. Questions, feel free to reach out to Kelly or the administration, and we will get answers for you. Again, we just want to inform voters, and we think there's a lot of good information out here. We're very proud of the budget that will be proposed to the community. Okay, any questions from the board for situation on Budget Hearing Number Four?
This is not in reference to Budget Hearing Number Four, but it was another just a financial-related question. Sure, thank you. Kelly, have you seen any of the projects we're working on now? We're starting to see increased costs on materials and, you know, buying things like a refrigerator or things like that are all on backorder. Are we seeing any spike in costs within the district in an unexpected manner?
Not really, because, you know, we're fortunate enough that we have state contracts with Grand Lion. So that really doesn't have a lot of flexibility in terms of change of prices. And we put out our own bids. Next week, you're going to have to see our bids for electrical sanitation and things. So we're able to really kind of maintain our costs. We don't see just the ups and downs as you would in your home where you're buying a television or refrigerator. With state contracts, there's really not a large area for escalation of prices. It's really kind of a fixed cost for a couple of three years, depending on the bid. So, you know, we're fortunate there that there really hasn't been a lot of shifts. And we're really not ordering as much equipment as we have in the past, you know. And we're not going through as many supplies as we have just based on, you know, you know, being not in person and then things to that nature. So it's been helpful that way. But yeah, we're not seeing a big escalation in costs in terms of equipment and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Are we part of any purchasing consortium when it comes to things that we use for the district?
Yeah, yeah. Southern Westchester BOCES does our bids for supplies and art supplies, office supplies. So we're part of a consortium with the majority of districts in Westchester and Dutchess, I'm sorry, and Rockland. So yeah, we're part of consortiums for that. That's a big thing. That's why we were able to just kind of maintain our prices in various items, supplies that we use on a yearly basis.
Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Sure.
Anything else from the board on Budget Hearing Four? Okay, we'll close that. Let's move to item 8.2 on the agenda, approval of the 2021-2022 Board of Education meeting calendar. You have it in the packet. May I have a motion, please, to adopt the Byram Hills Board of Ed 2021-2022 meeting calendar?
Summer.
Second. Second. Any questions, comments, concerns about this calendar? I remind everyone that it begins on July 13th, 2021, at 7:15 in the AM with our annual early morning reorganization meeting with bagels. And our first board meeting of the next school year will take place on August 31st. And we have our annual walkthrough of the district facilities, followed by the annual meeting. And a few days before that will typically be the faculty back-to-school meeting, correct? And whether that'll be virtual or in-person, a decision you'll make down the road. Okay, a motion to approve the calendar. All in favor, please? Aye. Okay, thank you. That brings us to 9.1, the report from the superintendent.
I think we have a grant, correct, Mira? Did we miss something?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry. I totally went over. I was looking at the budget. Sorry. Am I have a motion, please, to accept the 2020-2021 Foundation Grant for the Written Out Loud program for HCC? So moved. Second. In the packet, we have a letter from the Foundation signed by its officers to the board explaining the BHEF signature grant for the Written Out Loud at HCC. Who would like to speak to this?
I would love to speak to this. And my last slide will be a nice picture of one of our parents and her son featured on Good Morning America Saturday morning. I was told to watch between 7:15 and 7:45 to catch them. This is about a program called Written Out Loud that was brought to us by one of our parents. And the BHEF looked at it, and kids who have been involved in it have had an exceptional experience in storytelling and story writing, having conversations in small groups, building stories together, and then looking at published books. So this grant is going to bring this to eighth graders, a group of eighth graders, who I think there are about 80 of them, if I'm not mistaken. We're going to be a part of this, but the extension of this grant moving forward is going to have the crew from Written Out Loud start to talk to our kids and make this part of our storytelling and writing unit for even kids in the fall and to continue thereafter. So we are super excited about this. A team of students that worked with, very closely with Janine Capello and Melinda Fuller at the high school in order to get this done with support from Dwayne Smith from the English Department. And Melinda and Janine worked very closely with the BHEF to make this happen. So this is a grant that is really going to help transform some of this writing and storytelling for eighth grade. It's awesome. It's an absolutely awesome program. So we are going to be receiving published books written by these children going to their homes, and I'm really looking forward to it. If anybody has the art of storytelling, Janine and Melinda have captured that with eighth graders. So this is perfect in their curriculum.
That's fantastic.
And just thanks again to the BHEF. I mean, whether it's Viewsonics or walking around with me and establishing outdoor classroom space, which I now see our kids in all the time as the weather starts to get nicer, and continuing to look on with curricular projects like Written Out Loud. We couldn't be more grateful to them. Really an unbelievable organization for us.
Well, we accept their awards with gratitude, and their grants with gratitude all the time. This seems like a special one. So anybody, anyone else from the board want to speak to this before we put it to vote? Okay, motion made, seconded to accept with gratitude the Foundation Grant for the Written Out Loud program for HCC. All in favor, please? Okay, thank you, Jen. And thank you to the BHEF for your continued partnership with us for the best interests of the students. It's really been a remarkable collaboration over these years. Now, we turn to the superintendent for her report.
All right, quick report tonight. You can see my presentation. That's great. So this week, just last Friday, we received new revised guidance, interim guidance from April 9th. And it is guidance about social distancing in school and a bunch of other parameters. The superintendent's group met on Monday to put together a list of questions based upon this guidance because it does cause a little bit of controversy right now in what they are talking about from three to six feet of distance, particularly at the middle and high school levels. But some of the bigger points that I pulled from this document are important for the board to know about. They do ask for students to remain in cohorts to the extent practicable. That we know is pretty impossible by the time you get to some middle and high school if you're bringing back kids any more than in a hybrid fashion, right? So the hybrid fashion enables us to keep cohorts. The second you get rid of a hybrid fashion at middle school or high school, you essentially lose those cohorts. So that's to the extent practicable. Students must be six feet apart while eating. That is something that we have been doing. Physical distance requirements differ by grade level and transmission risk. Now, the first mini bullet there says to maintain distancing of at least three feet between students in classroom in counties with high risk of transmission. And when you look at the considerations for high risk of transmission below that, we most certainly fall into that in Westchester. And they say that elementary schools can maintain the physical distancing of three feet between students, even if we are in an area of high transmission, a county of high transmission. But middle and high school students, three feet between students is recommended only when the school can use cohorting. When they can't do cohorting, they must maintain physical distancing of at least six feet. That yellow language is important because if you're pulling back all students into school right now, it is impossible to be cohorting middle school and high school kids if you're bringing everyone in every day. So what that means is if you have 100% of your kids in and you're not cohorting, you're expected at middle school and high school levels to remain at six feet. That is not how people were interpreting the guidance prior to this new piece of guidance. And so pretty much every school in the county that's trying to pull kids back in right now is pulling middle school and high school kids in at three feet, but they are not co-horted. So this is going to be something that superintendent has put together a list of questions that we are bringing to the Department of Health to get further clarification. This is not going to affect Byram Hills right now because we continue to keep the six feet of distancing. But it could very well impact the future of doing anything other than increasing by 10% and continuing to keep that six-foot of distancing. So that is a little bit concerning to all of the superintendents. Exceptions where a minimum of six feet must be maintained, always between the adults and between students and adults. Six feet is required when eating meals or snacks, drinking. Other times, masks must be removed. Meals cannot be eaten in classrooms that have been converted to three feet of physical distance during instruction time. That means if we have schools that have brought back all of their kids at three feet in their elementary levels, these kids cannot eat in the classrooms at three feet. They have to be six feet apart, which is very difficult and not what everybody was planning for when they brought all the kids back. Wind instruments now, six feet apart, six feet of distance between performers and the audience. I am happy to say that the Department of Health, after much prodding, finally acquiesced to allow two spectators per student for theater productions. For quite a while, we were allowing in-person two spectators for indoor sports as per the Department of Health, but they had not released any guidance, and they were forbidding us from having theater productions. So we were able to rectify that, and I'm happy to say that our theater students in a safe, six-foot spaced environment will be able to have two spectators per student to come to those productions, which is really great. EDC no longer recommends physical barriers where physical distancing cannot be maintained. We are not pulling down the physical barriers in the elementary levels yet until we get clarification on that. So now, it used to be that people were reading the guidance to say that you could be three feet with barriers. So all of the schools purchased barriers where they could have the kids three feet apart. But now they're saying they don't need those barriers anymore. And that's really troublesome, especially for districts that really struggled to get the finances, to get these barriers, to get their kids back in. So what this confusing and often conflicting information does is it has districts spending a lot of money on things that potentially they didn't even need. And we know all desks should face in the right, in the same direction. They did give some notes about before and after care following the same guidance as schools as we think about the fall and the potential for Armung Children's Corner. They did speak about mental health, behavioral, and emotional support students for students needing to be developed. And that is something that we have been working on. Gina and Dave Mack have been spearheading this social emotional health for elementary in collaboration with the school psychologists. Excuse my bullet with no words. And they say we should put plans to limit the sharing of objects like lockers, hobbies, laptops. We have been compliant with that all along. Reopening plans must include opportunities for feedback, which we had been doing all along. And student learning must be prioritized based on need. And that's really the call to get some students into school more often than other students based upon their academic needs. So where are we with vaccinations? Well, we're not required to have staff respond to vaccinations. So despite the fact that we know the numbers are, you know, we know the number of people who have asked for vaccinations and helped with vaccinations, they're not required to respond. We're not putting that out there, but 85% of our faculty have responded that they have had both vaccinations and 92% of our administrators. And remember, sometimes people are not getting their vaccinations because they have COVID. And now they have to wait 90 days until they can actually get those vaccinations. So those are very high vaccination numbers. And now I'd like to focus on a lot of the good that's been happening here. I want to congratulate Ben Stanzion, Danielle Friedman, Morgan Oronsky, and Sarah Thielman. And we have the Peters Valley's 11th Annual Student Exhibition. It's on from April 11th to May 9th. There was a reception on Sunday and a slideshow of all of their pieces that were included. So this is pretty cool. I want to give a shout out to our high school students, our 11th grade students. And next, Byram Hills Youth Against Cancer. If you have a chance, go on our website to watch this. It's an evening on cancer education. It was fantastic. They had five professionals there from different foundations who were speaking about the impacts of cancer and some of their research. The introduction came from our club presidents, Lily Dittleswig and John Diavanzo. And interviews were conducted by Raquel Canner, yay, and Lauren Amico. So if you have an opportunity, please go to the website and take a look at that. I have the link in there. They did a phenomenal job. It was a great evening. We also have an award that was given for St. Vincent's Hospital Youth Award. And this, I can't believe I didn't put her name on here. I have so much to say. This is Sydney Levy. This is
This looks very familiar.
Yes, doesn't that face look familiar? Sydney Levy, right? And basically, she received this award because she best exemplifies St. Vincent's mission of charity, excellence in healthcare, and lifelong volunteering. And that volunteering has happened at both Blightdale Children's Hospital and Northern Westchester Hospital in just very unique ways on the Junior Presidents Council. So Sydney Levy, congratulations to you. And what a great picture.
Congratulations, very nice.
Really fantastic. And now we have Bobcat of the Season, Mateo Signan. You can go onto Bobcat TV and take a look at that video. It's pretty amazing. I know that Brian Melso is listening in right now. He has just done an absolutely incredible job with highlighting all of our artists, our athletes, our kids who are involved in clubs and activities, science research, everything. So I mean, this is just extraordinary. If you get a chance, go on our website and take a look. Congrats to Mateo. And also congrats to Olivia Pika, who was a Bobcat of the Season as well. Pretty amazing that they did have seasons, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And congratulations to Jennifer Mooy for being recognized all Westchester County for 2020-21 Winter Track and Field. She ran the fastest 1,000-meter time in Westchester County during the regular season. She's also been recognized for her 1,500 She's also been recognized for her fifteen hundred meter en route time during a one-mile race. She broke the school record in the eight hundred meters, edging past Francine Ward. I remember Francine.
Yeah, that that record stood for a long time, yeah.
Two thousand and three, yep.
Yeah.
Also, um broke into Byram Hills Top Performance List in the three thousand meters. So wow, just absolutely incredible. Um and I'm so happy that she was able to have seasons too. And then finally, we end with, I want to thank Renee Levine from the and the BHEF. This is a little piece from Good Morning America, which I did send out to uh the Board of Education. Um and I know that it was blasted on our social media for this grant of Written Out Loud. Thank you so much to the BHEF, and thank you to Renee for speaking on behalf of our school district. Um and just, you know, sharing this great grant with us in the first place. She's the reason it's here. So um thank you so much, and thank you to Jessica Bond and um for really helping to write that grant with the teachers at the middle school. Just really fantastic. And that is all she wrote.
That's a great report. And beautifully the achievements of our students.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Groups, it really is fantastic.
Right, I have to give Brian Melso credit for that, though. He captures that every time.
Brian, thank you. Thank you for your continued good work. Appreciate it. Um thank you, Jen, for that great report. Dr. Kotonecker.
Uh no report tonight.
Thank you. Okay, um Kelly? Kelly's done. All right, let's go to the board reports. In the interest of of sparing everyone, I will pass.
Oh, Ira, I have to say one more thing. I'm so sorry.
By all means.
I almost forgot. My most important moment of the night was that I received essays from second graders. Dear Dr. Lamia, we're so thankful for in-person learning and the hard work you put in to keep us here every day. Our students wrote an opinion essay on why they think in-person learning is so great. This is from Cole Peterson and Laura Borneman's class, and I just want to highlight a couple of the students in that class. Ruby says um how much she likes, I love in-person school. She gives a few reasons, and then she says another reason is my bus driver is called Charlie, and he's super nice, and I like seeing him every day. I always say hi to him, and he says hi back. I like collaborating with my friends. I love working collaboratively with my friends. For example, I'm writing a book with my friend. Oh, it's time to go home. I love in-person school. Do you like it, Dr. Lamia? And then um Tim, this one's for you. I picked this one out for you. This is by Nora. Nora says, when I do math, I tell my mom and dad what I learned. For example, I really like math because you can use your brain. Lastly, I love being in school in person. So she likes to use her brain. And Rebecca says, yes, I love being in school. Do you love being in school, Dr. Lamia? I do. First, I love to see my teachers. She lists her teachers, Ms. Borneman, Ms. Murray, and Ms. Ramirez. For example, they make it so fun to learn, and if I need help, they will help me. I like to see my friends in person. I like to play and write in my book with Ruby. So I just thought that these were awesome. So I want to say thank you to all of the kids in Ms. Peterson and Ms. Borneman's class. It makes my day to go in and see you, and as promised, I'm going to take these and I'm going to tape them all around my office so that I can read them every single day. So thanks so much. Thanks for letting me jump back in, Ira.
Oh, that was a great report. That'll that'll be in lieu of the president's report. Okay, any committee board member reports that, go ahead, Scott?
I just have a very brief report on the BHEF. There was a meeting last weekend. It's just worth mentioning that I think for the first time in the BHEF's history, there was a grant presented um by a combination of faculty, Ms. Capello, as as well as students at um the middle school. And there was a group of, you know, students that for many months have been working on this grant, and they're very excited about it, and and it was really phenomenal just to watch the students work with faculty and come up with an idea and then present it to the full board. So it was a very exciting and very nice meeting.
Great, thank you, Scott.
And I love their topic, Scott, that they're interested in careers. And they're interested in learning more about careers, being able to create podcasts, having some guest speakers, and having access to resources to help them learn more about what people do with their lives. So
Exactly. And it's like student choice as to what they want to learn based on what their career interest is.
Yeah, it's a great skill to learn about grant writing, too.
That's right.
And and congratulations to Cynthia. It's a nice Um okay, any uh any other committee board member reports at this point? Any future agenda RFIs from the board? Communications to the board? None that you have aware of? Uh may I have a motion, please, to approve the Board of Education minutes for the meetings of March second, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, and March twenty-third, two thousand twenty?
So moved.
Second, please. Second, any any amendments, proposed changes, Scott?
Yeah, I just have um there are two um change, small changes, but on the March second minutes, page four, budget discussion, there was a section that just said pensions and healthcare are two components dictated by the state. And I just wanted to change that. I went back to make sure I, this was exactly what I remembered, but in the recording, pensions are dictated by the state and healthcare benefits tend to rise faster than point seven five percent per year because the state doesn't dictate health. And then on um March twenty-third, page five, um where it just said Senator Schumer's office is allocating money to school districts, just to change that to uh Senator Schumer's office put out a run of money allocating just to districts um or money to districts. So just those two small changes.
Okay. Any other changes or modifications to any of the, to that set of ministers and the other ones? Okay, with Scott's proposed amendments, motion made in second, all in favor, please? All right. All right, that brings us to a motion to adjourn. We will meet again next week on April twentieth. Uh so may I have a motion, please, to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, Byram Hills. We'll see you next week.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, everyone.